We will call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education, August 17th, 2021. With Stanford Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, in this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brings us to special recognitions and presentations. We have none tonight. Delegations, we do have three delegations, and I will read the notice to all speakers who appear before the Harrison County Board of Education. Speakers before the Board of Education are asked to express themselves in a simple manner at all times, with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who will be affected by the content of your comments. This is a public notice that all meetings of the school board are audiotaped and most regular meetings videotaped to be televised later on Time Warner Public Access Channel 18. While it's not the intent of the Harrison County Board of Education to restipulate public input of deliberations, all speakers should be aware that your public comments made here today, if your public comments here violate the laws of defamation, rights of any other person, especially under laws of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally and individually responsible. If you're unsure of the factual nature of this clean comment or allegation you're about to make, the Harrison County Board of Education strongly encourages you to consult first with legal counsel. In order of when we receive these, William Ockerman, Mount Clare. And all speakers have five minutes.
Test, test, test. There we go. My name is William Ockerman from Mount Clare. I have a five-year-old daughter, and she's about to start kindergarten in Norwood. And I'm coming before you to ask for a mask mandate for the Harrison County schools. The rates of infection have drastically increased in the state of West Virginia. We've seen over the last three days that Harrison County has been in the orange, and the current percent of infection is rapidly increasing. There are currently only three counties in the entire state that are green. Everybody else is in either the yellow, gold, orange, or red. And we are continuing to move towards a trend of red in most counties. I ask that the superintendent and the board instate a mask mandate for all the students, especially because the kids who are starting kindergarten up through age 12 currently cannot get the vaccine at all. Wearing a mask does not restrict any of your breathing. I, in fact, have, you know, medical conditions, and I am able to breathe perfectly fine with this mask. So I beg you, please, instate the mask mandate. It doesn't do anything to the kids. My five-year-old daughter wears one every day now. That's pretty much all I'm asking is please reinstate the mask mandate.
Thank you. Krista Schaefer, Bridge of Port.
Hello, my name's Krista Schaefer, and I would also like to speak about the county-wide mask mandate. I feel that we should send our children to school with this mask mandate for several reasons. First of all, doctors and school nurses recommend it, and I believe they're the experts in this situation on consulting on health matters. We should listen to what they have to say. I'd like to read a little bit of a letter that was put together by several medical associations. It says, "To ensure the health and safety of students and school staff in their return to in-person learning this fall, the state's leading health organizations listed below, which are: American Academy of Pediatrics, West Virginia Chapter; American College of Physicians, West Virginia Chapter; C.A.M.C. Women and Children's Hospitals; Center for Rural Health and Development, Inc.; Coop's Family Children's Hospital, Cable Huntington Hospital; West Virginia Academy of Family Physicians; West Virginia Association of School Nurses; West Virginia Pharmacists Association; West Virginia Osteopathic Medical Association; and West Virginia State Medical Association, along with West Virginia Medicine Children's Hospital." All state that it is safer to send these kids to school with masks, at least until they're all able to be vaccinated. And as we stated before, and Mr. Ockerman stated, that our children under the age of 12 aren't able to choose to get this vaccine, yet it's not available to them yet. So until they have that ability, I think we should protect all the children, all of the children of the county, by wearing a mask to help. Me wearing my mask helps protect you. I'm protecting all of you from my germs spreading to you, just like I will be sending my children with their mask, and they'll be protecting all the other children at school from their germs. I want to know who's going to protect my children? Who's going to make all these other children wear their masks to protect my children? It's just the responsible thing, I think. And I think going against medical advice is not only irresponsible, but a huge liability that this board would not want to incur. I don't believe that's necessary. It's something we can be proactive about. And it's not enough for me to just send my children wearing their mask, as I said before, until they all can become vaccinated. And numbers return to a much lower and safer status, because they're not right now. They're trending upward. They're trending much higher. Right now, we're at orange. Just six days ago, we were yellow, which is greed, that green and yellow is as much safer status. That was six days ago. This is running rampant, quickly, through our community. Delta is contagious as chickenpox, but most of these young parents don't know what that means, since we practically eradicated chickenpox with vaccines. Furthermore, we were talking about the comfortability of wearing masks. Surgeons do it all day long, for hours upon hours. They protect themselves, they're protecting their patients that they're working on. It's just a responsible thing to do, and I'm calling upon you, asking you, begging you to please do this for our children. Something we could start the school year with. Doesn't have to stay this way forever. We monitor the numbers every day. We see the different color chart every day. We're seeing how fast it's raising. We're also seeing how quickly the Delta variant is blowing through communities. We could wear our masks and be out of this just as quickly as we're getting into it. So if it's daily evaluated, evaluated daily with responsibility, I think we can start the school year with masks, and then wean our way out of it when things are safer, when our numbers are safer. Our percent positive, let me see, our percent positive, we're at the yellow rate for our percent positive. And I believe that's the lower number that we're trending now. As Mr. Ockerman stated, our map is getting much more colorful, and I'd like to get it back to green, if everyone doesn't mind. So I think if we work together, we can all do that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last one is Richard I. Quinnham, but I don't see Richard I. Quinnham here. So he emailed that here. Carrara Brogan.
He's awesome.
And then, okay. That concludes the delegations. Brings us down to Superintendent's Update. Superintendent Stover.
Yeah, we have several things on the Superintendent's Update this evening. I think the first thing was we have the new employee orientation tomorrow. I don't know whether Ms. Leesburg, you want to speak on that, or?
Yes, we have different representatives throughout the county office. That will be presenting updated information for the new employees tomorrow morning. Introduce them and give them the information to refer to. Then again.
How many new employees?
Fifty-nine. That's on the envelope, so.
All right, that's good.
That's why the room is different, that's going to take place early in the morning, so we went ahead, tried to get ahead of it when we had custodians here to get the tables set up, so. And I think all the departments are speaking to the new employees. Always a good thing to see their faces. The other thing, number two, we have facilities, and we've got a lot going on with facilities. You can update us on Lost Creek and then maybe on Gore, where we're at before. Mr. Lopez?
Yeah, the Lost Creek project, again, it's coming into place. I'd like to thank the board for allowing some of the summer employees to work a little bit longer this extra week, so making a big difference, and being able to move some of the things last minute. So they're doing some last-minute waxing of the floors. We're just finishing up with some of the tile work that we actually were doing and getting credit in our department's work. So we just had David down there today, and David did some aerial shots with his drone, and he'll probably share that with you at some point. Looks great. Trying to get the routing of the traffic so that that first day, it's not chaos. It'll be somewhat chaos and chaotic, but I think that we can keep it manageable. Right now, the administration down at Lost Creek has done an excellent job of keeping things orderly and under control. Mrs. Trent's been very pleasant to work with, worked well with our maintenance department and our custody accrues, so things seem to be, you know, going into place. I'm sure if it doesn't, I'm going to find out about it. The Gore project, it's a lot of, it's up out of the ground now, for the most part, if that means anything. So that means that most of the complications that they've seen throughout the beginning demolition shouldn't start to take root and smooth out. So it's, I can't tell you the percentage that it's done, it's still, you know, it's due for substantial completion June 30th. Other than that, everything else in the county seems to be working well. Just a lot of pieces, a lot of moving parts, and they're all moving around, and we hit a few glitches here and there, but we've been able to overcome them, more than well as I think we expected. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have more specific.
Did you get the mapping, or the, last time we talked about getting the information to the parents on the traffic patterns?
Yeah, that's what David Oliverian's down there today, and he took some pictures off. I'll just pass this around to you. They'll, geez, take those and pass them around. They're going to work on, he's going to work on video, and we can get that pushed out.
Okay.
And we didn't want to do it too quickly. A lot of the signs that are coming in, the vertical sign, that'll be coming in, and we'll be putting that up at the end of the week also. So he was able to get a nice aerial, and he's going to work with magic, and then we'll get that pushed out, get it on the website, and also the school.
How about the lot across the street?
Dominion is finishing up their project, so we're trying to get them to move off of it. It's ready for the school buses. Remodeling work for everything, you know, it's been completed in the building. There's still a lot of room for storage in that facility, plus the old terminal, we have that for storage as an overflow.
Will there need to be any paving or crush put down on that?
Well, there's rock there, and we're going to probably have to add a little more rock. We won't want to do any paving probably for the next, not even till maybe spring, because we want to see if there's any soft spots. We will have to put some lighting on, and there'll have to be some electrical work so that we can cover these buses. So we've already kind of taken that into account. That will have to be, but with the weather right now, we won't have to do that until we take over and get that area. We kind of configured the way we want to park the buses, but we're ready, but it's in good shape. It's just getting Dominion. You know, if you've been down on Hawk Iway down in that area, it's hard to do, Dominion's got a lot of work going on, so. And that's, again, that's their lay-down areas, so we're hoping that they get finished.
Did they give you an estimated completion of one day?
Yeah, before Tuesday. That's what, I talked to them today, so.
Which Tuesday? Today?
Uh, next Tuesday. Yeah. So we have the 24th. So that, you know, they promised that they would take care of it. Now, we have a few days here and there. We can move our buses temporarily down to West Milford and over at Lost Creek. We made revisions, so if it takes them an extra few days, we'll be okay. They've done some great work down there, and you'll be able to see from some of the videos, and we're, we'll get that to you, but I'll tell you, campus is out here, it's really nice. Very nice.
Did we get the playgrounds in? That was another topic.
No, that's, that's something that the schools normally are responsible for any time there's a project like that. So the areas are there, but the actual equipment hasn't either been moved over or purchased
I had the opportunity to actually take a tour of kind of at Gore today, just to see what was going on. Mr. Ammons was there, he's the clerk of the works doing that project, and we were walking through just the building, and I was talking to him about the completion date over there. And he says, "Right now, the materials are coming in. I think windows are difficult to get," but they're, because I wanted to be sure, projected that that building would be completed, and he says that it's on track, and they're fixing things as they're seeing them. And so there's a lot of good work going on at Gore. Of course, it doesn't look like the building that you know. I had to turn around a few times because there's just so many things being done over there, but, so if you get an opportunity to stop over there, he'll kind of show you around and take care of that. And then the Hartman Building, I believe, is, talking with Kenny and the folks that are working on the Hartman Building, that it's making good progress and will be ready for United as well, so.
We were able to, a little extra help in there this week, we get more of that work completed.
Did we get our extra help to the warehouse?
I think we were looking at that for the next summer, like when we assigned, yeah, when we assigned summer crews, and looking back years past, and I think it's been a long time ago, but there used to be a summer crew person assigned to that warehouse. So when we do our assignments next summer for summer crews, we'll make sure that we get somebody at the warehouse.
I thought we were moving somewhere next couple of weeks, though.
Well, I think we're, this will be the last week for our summer help, because staff's going back next Tuesday.
Yeah.
So, and we're doing some trainings. We did offer to, and this is kind of an update of the opening of school, it's kind of my next item, we've asked principals to keep those four days, prep days, available for the teachers to prepare. I know we have some aides out for some trainings and some of the service staff that have some mandatory trainings, but other than that, they have some online beginning-of-the-year mandatory trainings to do, and then we have a new ELA series that they have some virtual training on. But other than that, we've tried to clear up those four days for them to get in their rooms and to get ready for our kids, because those are really prep days to be prepared for our kids to return. The other update really for opening of school, we have a meeting every week, I've met now twice with our health department. They've got a meeting on Thursday with their group of doctors and health professionals, and he's going to give me an update on Thursday, our health department, but I'm really speaking with them every day and had person-to-person meetings with them now twice. Their doctor and the director of the health department. So we are monitoring everything every day and watching these numbers, and they're right, the numbers are increasing across the county, and, well, really across the state and the nation, really, with the new Delta variant. So we are monitoring that right now and speaking with our health department. It'd be going down my list of.
They can, on facilities, and when we had the retreat, our work session before, we were going to, and I'm going to ask to see if we could have a special work session for facilities, and when we were talking about overcrowding, we never did.
Oh, that's for, the 23rd? No, that's.
You were looking at like the second week of September, or something like that.
Yeah, second week of September. We'll wait until school starts, and then we'll have one, you're looking, your meeting attendance rates, where we check out some of the areas.
Yeah, we're.
Take some votes from some areas of the county, take them to Salem, and, yeah.
Yeah, well, and just like that, I'll say, Johnson and Simpson, I mean, I just think we have a lot of things we need to look at now.
I think we decided on the second week, or the, in between the first meeting in September and the second meeting, so.
There's things we need to do now and not be the board that did them.
No, I think that was, we were planning on doing, it was a 14 session, whatever the Tuesday is.
You were looking at that second week.
Yeah. And we haven't set a date, it could be Monday to any of those days, but that's, it's going to be that week, so we'll.
Austin, this diagram is very, very nice. I assume that this is on our new roof list?
I guess. I'm not used to seeing it from a.
Is the entrance on the new roof list, by chance?
Talk about this section.
The diagram is very informative.
This section is showing the roof.
I can't.
Well, she's saying that there's a bad section.
The entrance.
Yeah. The rest of it looks pretty good.
Yeah, but that, and back to the left a little bit on nine.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that's really not looked well.
They don't get to check. Well, you can see where the new part is.
Well, I know, I think the new part even makes it look worse. I just wondered if that was a part of our, you know, the grant that was on. And then towards the back, like on the high school side where the condensers are and stuff, it's also really worn. It's just something, I think, and cracks in the apartment.
You'll learn that from the tape.
People going out, I don't think I would have ever known this. I'm just saying this is very important.
You're looking at, so they are. Would you rather hunt?
The seventh is the regular.
I don't, I don't. Well, what day is best, that week, for everyone?
The week, we could do an half an hour or 20, or an hour before the regular meeting. You wanted to do something like that?
Um, no, I think it's a little more than that.
Okay.
I mean, like a fourth.
But it's Monday or Tuesday, then?
Um, Tuesday would be better, I would think, Tuesday evening. As long as it's an evening.
Or?
Uh, five.
What day? The seventh?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
That would be after our first couple of weeks for enrollment numbers, we'd have a better idea.
Yeah.
Five. Okay. And I'll say something on the drawing, on safe usage of, because you know that on that, when you talk about utilization, I mean, it's been, I've heard that you can have upstairs and downstairs, because of so little of the.
We have all that information, utilization.
I think that was sort of.
Yeah, it's new information, so we have that.
We'll have it here.
Yeah. The only other thing, you were talking about overcrowding, or, there has been some loose coverage of Johnson, and we're monitoring that. Ms. Mancini is over elementary, and we're working with the elementary principals, and we've looked at, we're watching the enrollment at all the grade levels in that building, and then also watching Simpson, it's next door, and making sure that there's room there in that Bridgeport Theater area for those kids. And right now, we have one, one class really at Johnson. I wouldn't want to speak to that, but.
We have one class, third grade, who is, they are sending kids to Simpson right now. Other than that, there's not one class at Johnson where they're over and have to send them somewhere else.
So make sure that's clear, media.
So that.
I mean, I'm very honest. If you can restate that, so there's not any contradiction.
And that area is growing, there's no doubt. There are some things happening in that area where there's some housing developments and things, but right now, we're okay as far as the students and finding them a spot in that area.
Jimmy, just go back to the playground. So for Johnson, when they built, when we built Johnson, they were responsible out of the school's budget, not out of the new bill? Their brand-new playground, they had to pay out of their own school budget?
Yeah. No, I think the PTA, if I remember correctly. They came from there.
It didn't come from, it wasn't a new.
They're not a new playground. They brought their existing, one of their existing.
They have a lot of new equipment already there, and they just.
So are they responsible, I mean, because don't you, aren't you required in elementary to have playground time for their little kids? So wouldn't, if, I mean, if we're going to start school and they require our, I mean, I.
The requirement at elementary is for a 30-minute recess, so it can be in an open field, it could be.
They also have a gym that they didn't have before. I mean, some don't have.
But I'm just going, little kids without a playground, I mean, that's just sad.
Well, I think they have a playground, it's just could be inside, I mean, you have an indoor, that doesn't mean that they're not, just because we, because we're just opening a new school, when the first couple of weeks or month they don't have a playground, doesn't mean they're not going to have a playground.
Usually their PTAs go together and raise money and.
And the issue is, if we start going playgrounds, they're going to be cooking the playgrounds. They want, they want, you know, their PTAs want a bigger playground, so it's up to them to raise money. And quite honestly, we've seen the numbers there. Some of these schools have more money than we do in our general fund, so, I mean, there's some hoarding going on.
Let me say money all.
Well, that's only more quickly, as you get something.
Well, I'm just, whatever moved over, moved the equipment.
Thinking about that, Gary, we did have a discussion before on that. When these schools are holding so much money, I think as a board, we need to know what it's for. And I don't know how that played out in our discussion or what our requirements are, but we're making some very large decisions here, and then we look, and there's all this money within the schools being hoarded. I mean, I just think we need to know what it's for. I mean, so we don't vote on something, you know what I'm saying? Is it being held for this playground, and then we don't know?
If they're going to encumber it, then it's encumbered on paper and say what it's encumbered for.
Well, I think based on the account, you can kind of tell what it's got to go for. Like, if it's the athletic levy funds, then it has to go towards athletic levy.
But you may have a school that's holding it for a project three years down the road, and that's fine, but they need to notate it to us.
Just sell us what it's for.
I agree. They'll need to come, ask us $10,000, and they've got $300,000 in the bank.
Just last night, for like a discussion like this for Michael, we could say, well, you know, they have $70,000, and they have it set aside for a new program, and we don't have this discussion. I mean, when you're talking about these numbers, they have to be accountable for them, period.
They, they're holding right now $5,599.
That's it.
At Lost Creek. So I don't know how much playground costs, I bought one.
About 20 grand.
Not more than that.
But that doesn't include their PTA or any other.
No, so that's.
And they're eligible for contingency money, too. They came to us and said, "We've got $20,000."
I just didn't realize, I didn't, I thought we were on the new bill that was included, that didn't need to be. But that was my, my.
We didn't have Johnson.
Like I say, I know a lot of the high schools use, you know, money on their athletic facilities, you know, if they need to do that, you know, and they, somebody says, "Well, they got a lot of money." Well, they saved it for a big project. They linked it, for example. They saved all those years, now they've spent their money on their new facility.
And it would take two seconds to say why you're saving that. I mean, I think the public has a word to them, and as a board, never on one, and it's that simple, it's that.
They may not know exactly what their project's going to be.
Well, they need to find out, is what we're saying. You know, hoard money without a reason, especially if that's.
Well, what's going to come down?
If you're in that position, then if you say, "Well, you got all this money, you need to spend this money," then they don't have anything in the line, so they say, "Okay, you want these," then they go out and they waste the money. They buy things just to be spending to satisfy.
I wonder if they have a principal that's saving it for six years for this new athletic facility, and then you get a new principal in there that says, "I don't want one, I'm going to use it for this." That is another reason why it should be notated, because the principal is more or less the CEO of this school, and if he comes into this, and the school's a principal, and there's this money.
What can they do?
They've got a man before, and he's saving it for a reason, so there's more than one reason to disclose why you have money being saved. I mean, I think it's a big deal.
I think that's something that really Julie and Chris could work with the principals to make sure. I mean, that's, would be part of oversight of those administrators. You know, at least, at least we can have something documented if there's a large pot of money there, you know?
Exactly.
That's a simple, I mean, that could be a simple.
Just say what it's for.
They may not know once.
Then they say, "She locked you in on it without a reason." I'm just saying.
They saved it. They saved it, you know.
Maybe the, I mean, the board can't do that, we can't just have a little secret stash of money and not tell the public what it's for.
It's, it's not a secret stash, it's, it's public knowledge, you know, how much money they got, and all, and like I said, if you would have looked at Lincoln, I'm using you as an example, they had thousands, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars and they waited and they spent it on their new field house, and they spent it all, you know.
Exactly, and what I mean, as they said, we're doing, that's all I'm saying, is I don't see a question, I think, I think there's a legal obligation and that's all I'm saying.
I don't see where it's a legal obligation, as long as nobody's embezzling any of the money, I don't think there's any legal, because it's there and like I said, they have to build up. I mean, you look at Bridgeport High School, they just built a new field house, they got a new weight room, and they raised money, they used their athletic monies, and all, to, to finish it, and they still, right now, don't have enough to quite complete it because they're raising money to, for their weightlifting equipment and what have you, and when they get to that point.
And I understand where both of you come from, I just think it's prudent, it will be prudent in the future that we have a handle on it, that way if they come asking us for money, then we have the right to ask them what they're doing with that money that they have, that's all I care.
Say there's nothing wrong with, with the principals putting together a wish list, and that may not happen, um, but it gives you the opportunity to say, these are the things that we're looking at towards the future. We're not going to, we're not going to earmark this money yet until we know what we're going to be doing in the future, but this is a list of things that we think we want to go for with this school.
Exactly.
I don't.
I have no problem if someone has a hundred thousand dollars in there, but when they come and ask us for money, separate from that, we need to know what the hundred thousand's for.
Yeah, that's for our.
You know, it's like, well, you know, if we're going to give you money, and, and if you want money but you've got that set aside for a legitimate reason, that's a different story, but if you don't and you're asking us for money, then we need to know.
For example, okay, I'll ask, Mr. Decker, how much money did it cost you for your new field house addition?
Four hundred and seventy-four thousand and some odd dollars was what the bid came in, and the board contributed a hundred fifty thousand, the rest were from our local athletic funds.
But, but your new addition has taken almost all your money.
Yes, for several years, it goes back to when Mr. Lopez was a principal.
And that's a, I mean, I don't know if that's a bad example or a good example, that's what I'm saying, that's legitimate, that's in there and, and they're looking for a field house, that's perfectly fine.
But, but that's not something you guys just decided last week that you were going to do, it's been in the makings for a few years.
So you could notate.
So you could notate something along those lines to say.
Exactly.
Nobody's saying that they're desolate or, you know, they're, they, these funds, you know, are trying to prime to their business, it's just that it's money.
And I think even more than that, you need, if a principal has that money in there, a good principal should have a plan on what they plan on doing five years down the road, right?
Not just building up. Whether they have, whether they have the money or not, it's kind of like a strategic plan, you know, that you have, you know, what, what are you going to strategically plan over the next three to five years? And if we have the money available, if we have the athletic funds, then maybe we can do X, Y, and Z from a strategic standpoint, you know what I mean?
That's, that's fine, you know, you always have a wish list, you know.
You don't just question any other funds, in fact, it's commendable that our principals have been so good at saving and all, and saving and having these funds, nobody is like saying anything naked. It's just simply what are they for, or what do you have plans for? I mean, there's nothing wrong with that.
I, I've known schools in the past that had monies, a bunch of money, and other schools that didn't have very much money, the other school needed to do a project, so they borrowed from the school that had all the money.
I think that happens now, I think Bridgeport Middle and South Bridgeport High, they link the middle.
Out of their yearly money, you know, so like I said, I, I think the monies were there, you know, whatever big project, sometimes, you know, you just don't want to spend money just to spend the money.
Agreed.
I mean, I know many years ago when I was a bar, we kept having problems with the tennis court, and we poured thousands of dollars into the tennis courts to finally get it to a point where that was operational and able to be used, you know, so, like I said, but that wasn't what our main focus, our focus wasn't just the tennis courts, but that's where we had to keep spending the money.
And we're hopeful that our schools with turf on their floor are putting money aside.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, really, this is something that'll be an easy remedy, we'll make sure that we're monitoring it and not necessarily micromanaging the money, but at least looking to see that they've got a plan and, and what they're going to spend it on, so we'll, we can take care of that for sure. The other thing on superintendent's update is Mr. Hove and the United Technical Center.
Yeah, they were detecting the other day, uh, there were, there's a couple of people absent, a woman, I don't know her name, Mrs. Stuffer, she was in the gusset.
Bring up Lincoln again, right?
She had a good excuse, but.
All about Lincoln.
The gentleman from Doggerich County had a revival, he's a minister, he had a revival, and somebody had COVID, so he had to miss, so we was, but we got managed to get through. Uh, things there, uh, one, uh, was it the LPN that we had hired the last time? They didn't kind of use this, use the situation because she went back to her old job because they was able to give her more money, so she, so we had to turn around and hire another LPN lady, you know, and she had agreed to it. They also hired a collision, you know, and body shop man, uh, he, he was a gentleman from, I believe, down in the Chinston area who worked for his father, and he took the job, you know, for approximately fifty thousand dollars and was making sixty-five, working for his father, but he took it for the benefits, and also he's going to work with his father on the side, so he'd be able to recoup, that's how they was able to get it, because they said it was hard finding somebody to give up a body shop job for the money that they were getting paid. And, uh, he also has a court case that he's still working on, uh, they have the third and final hearing, and they're waiting on the results on that. Said they think it'll be sometime in September before the examiners come back, and.
The body shop man?
He, huh?
The body shop guy?
No, 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 this is another position where they, they combined two jobs and then one.
They grievance, it's, yeah, it's a one.
So it's on level three, and they're going to have a big open house, uh, and they're going to bring in all the kids who are going to be going to the career center, and, uh, other than that.
He'd ask us to push that out, I believe Mr. Oliveria had started pushing that out before.
So, but, uh, other than that, that's pretty much, you know, what took place during that meeting there, you know.
All right, that's all I have for superintendent.
All right, moves us down to approval, consent items, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded in the discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, student affiliate, or new business, student affiliation agreement with West Virginia University School of Medicine.
Make a motion to approve the student affiliation agreement.
Seconded.
So moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two contract between Harrison County Board of Education and the Arc of Harrison County, continuing contract. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. So moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two contract between Harrison County Board of Education and the Job Squad.
I'll make a motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I would, I would maybe like to hear what the Job Squad and, and maybe the Arc have got going on, you know what I mean?
We had them here last year.
Yeah, maybe they can come in and talk to us again.
Okay, I can do that.
And where, where the Job Squad works, you know, and this.
And this is nothing for, I mean, it doesn't cost us anything.
No, it doesn't, we're really kind of providing a service to give them a place to intern, that's what it is.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, school support organizations, there is, uh, the list of support organizations for fiscal year twenty-two, and they are attached. Those are the approved and no other, or allowed other than the approved.
Right.
So if someone comes knocking on your door, trying to raise money from.
In the name of that school.
In the name of the school, then that'd be one of those organizations. Is there a motion?
There's a motion, I, I'd make a motion to approve the school support organizations.
Okay, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Academic, yes, academic and athletic boosters combined, and then some with a comma. I wonder that, why is that? So all academics and all athletic money, you know, let me carry that one.
Are you looking at Bridgeport High School?
No.
Some say academic slash athletic, some say academic and.
I think have combined.
Yeah, years ago, they used to be individual, yeah, years ago, they used to be individual, you had the athletic boosters, you had the academic boosters, you got the band boosters, I mean, you got boosters, boosters.
A lot of them have combined because they couldn't get enough participation, they were just one single group, so a lot of them have, have combined their groups. I think they were probably as long as I'm actually worried of it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And you determine, like when people make donations, I think you determine the athletic director with the money that's on the security, I mean, a lot of it, if it's combined, the athletic director.
Well, those are separate entities, so they actually have their own checking account, those, those groups are not within the school, so they have their own treasurer, their own.
Okay.
So they determine how they allocate.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, psychologist after hours contract for twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I'd make a motion to accept this psychologist after hours contract for twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, the, uh, I know we don't have enough mental health specialists, uh, but I know I, I tried, we had a, didn't we have an eight hundred number or, but there was a a number if we had people after hours that were fighting with depression that we had, they'd call counselor, or do we still have that, what's the? What, what's that?
Safe schools.
Safe schools, so they could, that's still going on, but they can call that, safe schools, and then it'll refer to the local counselor?
Correct.
Can we get David to push that out too?
Yeah.
Yeah, and there are some other organizations, we've shared with teachers, like two-one-one is another that you can dial and then you tell them your concern and they help put you with an agency that can support that concern. So it's not just for depression, it could be for anything, it can actually be adults who are suffering some, you know, problems with food, they don't have the money to buy food and you can dial that two-one-one, and we did just recently share that as a special education workshop with our teachers as another resource that they can provide to parents and students.
Can we push that up on the page, just so, I think right now, kids in depression are just rampant.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, real estate purchase agreement. And that is, uh, I think I'm a little bit versed in this, uh, this was a recent building, if you remember, Bo Henderson purchased it because he could get in there quickly. But with school starting, we really needed it in our name for liability issues, anything, so he doesn't want to have a building there with kids in it, in his name. So if this is approved tonight, I guess, uh, Mr. Lopez and I will be closing on it tomorrow. Eleven o'clock, so, if not, then my eleven o'clock will be free tomorrow.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second, and just for everyone's knowledge, we're paying what we sold it for in the first place, so we're back to a watch, we have a building and, uh, we sold it twice, and we bought it back once.
With, with that being said, you know, we're, we're buying it back, uh, I, I think even once we're done with it, with, uh, you know, the United High School and everything that's made. I, I think that we need to hold on to that building, and I also would like to see us put something in that building, whether it be a, it could be a kindergarten, or it could be a group out of the county office or, or something like that, or rent it to a, you know, a, uh, organization, and, you know, charge a rent on it. I, I just think that we need to keep it and utilize it because we never know with all the things going on the next few years down the road where we're going to need.
What, what are limitations beyond preschool?
Well, I think it's just because of the stairs, you have to have a fire marshal evaluated for the age of the children.
I don't think you're allowed to have stairs with pre-K and kindergarten, are you?
They have to be where there's an exit out, and I don't know, I've not been in a, here.
But if, I mean, we need to look at it, because it could be something that's remedy and then.
There's a nice multipurpose room, and now that the cap, the kitchen area is going to have a new sink and some things, not really to cook a full meal, but there's going to be upgrades in there.
That's still, you know, that's not what happened today, and then a year, maybe a year and a half down the road, then we can look at it and evaluate, but I just think that there's no need for us to think and get rid of it again and then, you know, we can talk another bite like we are now, you know, uh, to go back.
Well, if you think about it, all the horror of buildings, anything could happen at any time to one of them, you need an emergency place.
Exactly, and I just think that we ought to consider that, I even had somebody today, I mean, we should have came back and, uh, probably the Roosevelt Wilson High School could have still, it's still in great shape and could have looked in and they think that the lady that owns it now was unwilling to sell the building, it, you know, it depends on the price, but, uh, it's still in the chain, so those are things, like I said, we never know when something's going to happen, and we need, we need to be able to house children in a hurry, so.
Is there a motion on this?
I might read the motion as a second.
Is there a second? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, no old business, uh, policy updates, well, we have four of them, uh, policy eleven oh one, school attendance update, uh, policy forty-three oh two, student assignment to schools update, policy forty-one oh three, manual for expected behavior in safe and supportive schools updated, uh, and virtual schools update policy fifty-seven oh one. Any, yeah, make the motion to.
To approve all four.
Yeah, anyhow, we'll have discussion, yeah.
Uh, policy, I make a motion to approve all four together, policy one-one oh one, policy forty-three oh two, policy four-one oh three, and policy five-seven oh one.
Second. The move is seconded, any discussion?
Yes, is there a waiver request for thirty day comment?
We, it's up to you, we, the policy committee has met, we sent out an email, they don't, it's up to you if you would like to put them out for thirty day comment.
I would like to put them out for thirty day. Yeah, is there anything, there's nothing pressing that these have to be updated?
Not really, the, the one, the school attendance update, just to give you an idea what that is, the administrator, several years ago, and I don't know when that was changed, maybe five or six years ago, for students attending school, they could be, get a waiver from taking semester exams. If they didn't miss so many days, they could have a waiver, but the administrators asked if that could be put back in because they thought it was valuable, Mr. Kirby felt that it was valuable for attendance that, um, if you're rewarding the kids that are attending school, that that might be an advantage for them to not take the semester exam, so that's the only change in that one for the attendance. The forty-three oh two, this is the one for out of area, out of county transfers into our county, we've developed a procedure for that, if we have.
Based on the new law.
Based on the new law, and so that's just really, uh, outlining whatever that procedure is, and then the policy manual is just an update because we've updated the other policies, we have to change the policies in our policy manual for that, so.
Could you go over a little bit more of the virtual schools update?
Okay, the virtual schools update, last year, when we were required as a school system to put in elementary virtual, we changed our policy to reflect that we had elementary virtual. We actually just took that out of this policy and then put in, there were some pre-COVID virtual qualifications in order, if you're going to do virtual, you need to have internet, you need to, um, be doing well. You can't fail in a virtual class and then just say, hey, I'm going to sign up again and take all virtual again, so we put some guidelines, they actually were already in place pre-COVID for virtual. So we kind of updated the language on what the school's responsibilities were for West. So we kind of updated the language on what the school's responsibilities were for West Virginia Virtual and we took out the elementary piece.
Clean up.
Yeah, cleaning it up.
But this virtual is not through Harrison County.
No, this is West Virginia Virtual.
Virtual schools. That's what I wanted to verify.
Yes.
Okay, so you want to amend your motion to.
I have one more discussion. I have one more discussion. I was looking at the student assignment to schools and the only change on that is 4302 got A, transfers remain in effect unless we send it by parent or nurse and tell the Board of Education and need renewed annually. The words not be are renewed. I had an issue with this from the very beginning when I started on the board. I had with this renewal. My issue is this, if we have a school, and I'll give you the exact example, Northview, which had too many of our classrooms, so we sent several of the Northview students over to Adamston. And then like after a year or two, you know, there's this back and forth. And one of the biggest things I didn't like was the fact that you have these students and they learn and kept classmates, especially when they're younger, and because of us not having space, they have to go to another school and then we were pulling them back. So I'm not exactly sure how that affects that, but I thought is that what was put in there to fix that?
I think that is probably more Mr. Kirby, correct, where they have to be on a new day. That way he has something to hold over.
Well, I think there's two different things. There's two different scenarios. There's the overflow scenario. If we're displacing them and sending them to another school. And then there are the parent requests that come into your building. They're treated differently. If we put them there, we're not pulling them back and forth. We shouldn't. If we place them there because we don't have rights, I think that was probably happening at one point.
And that's what we kind of stopped and I just want to make sure that that's not a part of it. Now, with that being said, I know there are two different scenarios. But I still think that principals, superintendents, everybody involved need to be responsible when you agree to allow a student to start at another fort. And although it needs to be renewed annually and even if it was the parent's request or whatever, when we say okay, I still don't think it's a good idea. I'm talking only about that child to move them back and forth. So then the parent comes back next year after their child, and I'm just saying, suppose went to another fort. And when you say, no, they're not due this year, they have to go back to, you know. I don't think that's really fair and to play parent and suit and board of the board's following. I mean, we have to consider.
That was not the intent of this, to shuffle kids back and forth. I think all of us here, and I think Ms. Leesberg met with the committee, this was an idea that if a child is requested to be in your building and they, sometimes they'll request to attend the building and then they may live across county and then they're transporting and not bringing them and they've missed 20, 25 days. I think they wanted something to say, look, if you're not going to be here and be responsible to get your child here, they wanted some avenue to say, at the end of this, did you talk about semester or?
Not the year.
At the year. At the end of the year, you're going to return back to your home school. It's really for circumstances where the child may not be attending every day or it really is. Mr. Kirby was on that.
Okay.
It really, it would be a rare circumstance if you're, we would not be shuffling the kids back and forth. I don't know that anybody would want that to happen. But there are circumstances where a parent will say, yes, I'll bring them, I'll provide transportation and then they miss because they can't get them there.
Well, one more scenario.
In their home school where they can bus them.
One more scenario, just so, you know, you can see my concern, let's talk about a high school. The principal said, yes, these two bigger twins came up to my school. One was bad. One behaved real well, the other one did, but they ended up being sent back to Liberty because of behavior. And I just, and of course Liberty was in this situation, well, gee, she wanted him. I just don't think that's fair to play those games with students. If on that day you said, I will take these two kids, whether they're good behavior, good students, or, you know, failing. Our schools are obligated to keep them and not look at addresses and say, I'll get rid of this problem. And it did happen within the last few years. I know of a pat. And I just don't think, I didn't think our policies were set up to allow that. And I think something needs to be good in there that.
If you're taking your child from another school, there would be guidelines in regard to behavior, attendance, academic achievement and all, and if that child doesn't fulfill that obligation, then I see the problem where they're sent back to their home school.
I do. I don't really get out child behavior by doing, not saying your dad gets to the other school. I'm just saying that if there are guidelines, maybe I'd like to see them because I always thought that was horrible.
Well, I mean, I agree with Doug. If the student, if you're setting the guidelines of, hey, we'll take you, but you're not sticking.
It's on there, it's on form. They have to fill out a form.
Responsibility contract that you need to follow. Of course, we're giving you what you want.
There's a form that the parent signs and both administrators sign.
And Mr. Kirby vets those.
Yes, if you're leaving, say Liberty and going to Bridgeport High, the Liberty principal signs, the parent signs, and the Bridgeport High.
And it has a guidance on it.
It says exactly what's on there, why you could be sent back to that previous school, for what reason.
Well, I just wasn't aware of exactly how that went.
Different here is we were approving them, like they would stay in a programmatic level from like pre-K to five and then they wouldn't change until they went to the middle school.
Yeah.
So that's the difference. This is, you know, so they can at least look at those students at the end of each year.
If you want to amend your motion to put it out on 30-day comment. If that's what you.
I would like to amend my motion to put the policy changes out on 30-day comment to the public.
Okay, so second amendment motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Personnel matters and there is a regular personnel and then the agenda adjustment, the addendum to that. And I think since everyone's here, they have copies of it.
Yeah, I move pursuant to 60-9E-42, West Virginia, because we're going to executive session to discuss personnel, personnel matters, which if discussed, it might affect adversely the reputation of any person.
Is there a second?
Second, Doug.
It moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. We'll be in the executive session.
Yes, we will. Yes, we'll need ten.
From executive session.
So moved.
Moving to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us down to personnel matters. The agenda adjustment. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we remove the, we're just, I don't know.
Table.
Take it off the list, the parent, the vendor, and the volunteers off of it.
So you're, are you making the motion for the personnel?
Yeah.
Personnel with the exception of?
Yes.
Yes. The exception of item, hold on. Yeah, the exception of item four, other parent, volunteers, drivers, and vendors.
Yes.
All right, that's your motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We move to second and into discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us down to board member comments. Mr. Daughtry.
The only comment I have is about the mask mandate. I know there's a lot of science out there, a lot of people have things. And I know the largest mask study done in the world, 6,000 volunteers, showed that masks did not work and actually increased COVID by 20%. That is the largest mask study done in the world. Also, the New England Medical Journal has a study with the U.S. Marines, and they showed that masks did nothing in that study with our U.S. Marines. I'm all in favor of parent choice if they want to send their kids to school with a mask, but I am not in favor whatsoever about putting masks on our students. I think it's really hard for the little kids to learn without being able to see the teacher's face, their lips moving. I think it hurts our special needs students. Again, I think you want to send a child, just, how do we mask police? You want to, if you want your children to wear it, I think great for parents. I mean, everyone's had a chance to get vaccinated or not. Some people, I mean, chose to, some people chose not to. But for those kids, according to the CDC's numbers, even with the Delta variant, it doesn't really affect kids. The flu affects kids more than COVID, according to the CDC. I'm in no way advocating or vote for any mask mandates on our kids at all. That's all I have.
Ms. Messenger.
I would just add to that that there are two very passionate sides about wearing masks and people that don't. And there's a thousand and one organizations out there that have their different studies. So with that being said, I am not a doctor. Therefore, I will follow the recommendations of our health department and our superintendent. I feel that's the wisest choice I can make, considering I am not a health professional, and there are so many different needs out there.
Mr. Ho.
I guess staying on the same train. You know, the old adage is, you know, prevention is worth a pound of cure. And I don't think, I think it's in the best interest, myself personally speaking, I have grandchildren that can be vaccinated and not only my grandchildren, but all of our children. I just think that to start school, we have invested a lot of money in the classrooms where we put the plastic shields around. I think once a child's sitting behind their shield at their desk, if their mask is down, that's not a problem. But anytime they're going to lunch, to breakfast, to the restroom, to the gym, and, you know, to the buses, I feel that they should be masked up. It's easier to go back and take it away as things improve, rather than not doing it at first and then the kids getting sick or what have you. And I also, you know, being retard, I mean retired, the, I watch the news every morning and I, Dr. Fauci and the CDC and all the other doctors, you know, I've all, I saw all them, that they recommend that we should mask up until it comes to a point that things, the Delta virus starts going down. They're saying maybe in September, October, that it may take a turn and start, you know, it's going to go up and then it may go back down. But we don't, we don't know that for a fact. You know, we don't have the crystal ball to look into the future. And I personally hope that we have our teachers and school personnel and our children in masks at the start of school. But that's not my call to make. That will be Mrs. Stutler and the health professionals and all that she will be in consultation with. So, you know, and it is tough. The governor doesn't want to make the call. If I was making the call, I don't know what my call would be. But that's not my call to make. So, Mrs. Stutler, it's balls in your court.
That being said, I think that Mrs. Stutler is very capable, Superintendent Stutler is very capable of handling this, and she's been in contact with our health department. And any recommendations that do come through from the health department and Superintendent Stutler will obviously be listened to very, very strongly and will take it as it comes from a day-to-day basis. What I do want to deviate from is that we start school next week with teachers, and I really, 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 really hope that they are ready to go and that they do a good job and that they're, that we have support set in place for them so that they can have the supplies that they need for a successful year. And I wish them all the best beginning this year.
And I'd just say, we weathered the storm, you know, over the last year and a half. And I think this board's weathered the storm by allowing Mrs. Stutler to make that determination in consultation with the health department. And, you know, I've said it before, I mean, I'm going to believe science, I'm going to follow science. There are a lot of studies out there, and unfortunately, a lot of studies on the virus come from sites that give your computers viruses. So I'm, I would rather just, I'd rather just Mrs. Stutler make that determination. I think she'll do the proper thing, and I think she's done the proper thing. And it's been, it's been a rough year and a half, but I think stay the course. Whatever she determines, I know it'll be in the best interest of the students. That, is there a motion to adjourn? Second. Moving to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Children of peace, go in peace.
Oh, yeah. Congratulations.
Wait a minute.